We've got to stop that. That happened in my neighborhood.
All right, we'll bring this meeting to order. It's good to be back. I know I missed last city council meeting. Chair, you went at the one before that, so good to see you, good to see everybody.
Are we well?
Yeah, oh yeah, I'm good. And at this time, I would like to introduce and welcome our new interim city manager, Mr. Philip Gerald. Good to see you up here. And just a reminder, this is a workshop, so there will be no votes taken and no discussion from the public. So with that, we'll get right to it. The number one item on the agenda is the remediation of the old Beckley landfill site on New Jersey Avenue by Thrasher Engineering. So is there someone here from Thrasher? How you doing, sir?
Good, how are you all?
Doing great.
All right. Thank you all for your time this evening. So I'm Sam Ridge with the Tractor Group, as if I probably needed to say that, but you all got sick of seeing me last year. But I'm back to talk about a different project tonight. This is something that has been in the works for many years, and with turnover on council, us working with another entity for this grant, being the Development Authority, we kind of felt as a project team that was warranted to get in front of council, update you on the progress that's being made on the project, kind of what we're doing, what this project even is, how it came to be. So I just put together a quick agenda for what I'm going to talk about tonight. I want to introduce our team who's working on this, some background on the project to bring you up to speed, what this is, going to talk about remediation options, and then future development and next steps. So for anybody, and I'm going to talk about the project site and location, where it is that we're actually doing this remediation grant. But basically, what we are doing is trying to return the old city landfill site, which is out by the, it's right on the Finding Creek Gorge, close to the Beckley Police Shooting Range, New Jersey Avenue, so very, very close in proximity to the East Beckley Bypass. And I'll show some maps and some photos of where that is located in just a few minutes. But this has been a long time coming. There's been a lot of effort put in by many people, consultants, city staff, volunteers, people that have really just tried to work for a long time to see this property to its full potential. This is also in great proximity to the Beckley Mill Site, the Alfred Beckley Mill, which is an historic site that was constructed in 1835, is down in the gorge below this landfill location. In fact, this picture here is taken at that site. So just kind of get into the rest of the presentation to bring you up to speed on what we're doing here. So I'm serving as the principal over this project, and I have with me tonight Sam Wilkes, who is a licensed remediation specialist, a licensure in West Virginia. And what we are doing is working with the Development Authority right now on EPA brownfield cleanup grant. The landfill site, in this photo, just kind of some points of reference, you can see the existing police range, the convention center, so you can kind of see the go mark is right here, it's optimized and powered. So just some points of reference, so everyone understands where we're talking about. If you turn down to New Jersey Avenue, that's how you access the police range, and then there is another road that would continue on out to where the landfill site was. As far as kind of the history behind this, this was a landfill that was in operation, and there are conflicting records on this, I put these dates on here. I can't verify them because I've seen some dates that say it opened in the 30s, some dates that say it opened in the 40s. But it was in operation for approximately 40 years in the absence of our current landfill facility that's operated by the Raleigh County Solid Waste Authority. As far as recent history associated with the project, there were some planning initiatives that started in around 2016. And there was an idea at the time about redevelopment of this site, and kind of the main driving purpose behind that was to build a theater mixed-use venue facility that would be the main home of Theater West Virginia. Everyone is aware of their current home at Grandview, at the visitor's center, part of our national park. That venue holds around 1,000 people, and was constructed, I believe, in the 60s. Does not meet any current code for accessibility. It's bigger than the crowds that they have had for many years. So there was just a lot of thought being put into the fact that the Park Service does not have a budget to keep that facility maintained, to upgrade it, to make it a more attractive venue. So Theater West Virginia was one of the initial kind of drivers of what could be put at this site. And that was a way to bring tourism into the area, to also provide better access to this historic mill site that we have in the gorge. So that was kind of the onset of the project. At that time, Thrasher was contacted by the city, and I think we started doing some planning work in 2017. Concurrently of that work, there was some funding that was put forth for Phase One Environmental Site Assessment that was done by another company. What the purpose of those assessments are, are to look at the past use of a site, historic use, and identify potential for contamination that would be harmful or hazardous from a health and safety. That Phase One, when one of us concluded, obviously identified that this was a landfill that had been operated and likely not properly closed out, which was evident by the massive amounts of debris that were scattered all over the hillside. There were appliances, there were tires, and all kinds of just random pieces of metal. If you walk out there today, you can still see some of that, the remnant of that that's there. There have been great efforts by the DP, West Virginia Reef, and the city, and then volunteer groups over this kind of period of time that I'm talking about. When the Phase One was first conducted, compared to walking out there today, it's tremendous the progress that has been made to clean up this old site and get some of that to bring out of there. So I commend everyone that's been involved in making that happen. So we fast forward, they did the Phase One, they did the Phase Two, which identified kind of the approximate limits of where that landfill was located. And that's where the theater project hit a roadblock, because there was this obvious contamination issue that we needed to figure out how we were going to deal with, and it was going to cost money. So over a period of years, and some changeover, and even the volunteer group that was associated with that project, I feel like it kind of just set stagnant for a little bit, because there was just a lot of uncertainty of how we were going to move this forward. People started having direct conversations, and there was potential, there were some conversations with the Southern West Virginia Brownfield Assistance Center, and identified that there is grant money available to entities to clean up old brownfield sites. The caveat with that was that the city of Beckley was the initial operator of that landfill. So they were not eligible for Environmental Protection Agency guidelines to be the recipient of those funds. So you all went through a process, I believe that would have been in '22, to transfer the property to the New River Gorge Regional Development Authority, who was also an eligible entity to receive those federal funds. And because they were not the operator of the landfill, they were able to take over that property, apply for that grant, and were successful at getting $500,000 EPA cleanup grant for this project. What that, the scope of that basically includes is was some limited site reuse planning, engineering design, bidding, construction, the actual construction to do the remediation. And at that point, NRG RDA put out a solicitation for consultants that would do this work, which Thrasher submitted on, and we were selected through that process. I just wanted to show a couple images. So these are photos of the actual landfill site. And you can see by the 1950s, 1960s style vehicles parked in this photo, the timeframe that they were approximately taken, as if the black and white photos were not, you know, obviously not of their age. But you can see the gorge in the background, it kind of really sat out on this point. But I just, yeah, no, they're kind of hard to see from across the room, so I will make this presentation available to you all to be able to have a better look at it. But this is kind of what we're dealing with. I mean, you had the kind of flat part of the mountain was where the actual dump site was. There was a lot of burning at the time, which was standard practice in landfills at the time. There was a lot of debris that was being burned. But you can see the debris even kind of scattering over the hillside in that photo. What this map, which is from the Phase One Environmental Site Assessment that was performed for the city, what this illustrates is this red outline is depicting the approximate limits of that landfill site in this property. What you can see, for reference, this is where the shooting range is. So it is a limited portion of the property. It is not all encompassed in, you know, there are lots of areas of this property that was owned by the city that were not disturbed by activities associated with the landfill at all. So I did want to point that out, I thought it was important to show, we're really just focused on that, that particular outlined red area where the landfill was located as part of this remediation project. I just wanted to share kind of some of the previous planning work that's been done, both by Thrasher and a part of the WVU Landscape Architecture Program, also did some work, which I'll talk about in the next slide. So these are just some images of, originally, we were looking at, could we put the theater out on the point where the landfill was located? That was being done at the same time we were doing this environmental work, which was going to obviously identify to us, no, that doesn't work. The concept of an open-air theater is still feasible on the property, which we'll kind of show in some later renditions. But these are just some of the original kind of renderings and graphics of what an open-air theater at this location might look like. The WVU LA program also did some work to visualize, and this was kind of closer in conjunction to the designation of the new national park. There was a lot of thought behind, this is strategically positioned on the corridor. If you're visiting the New River Gorge National Park, it's not like other national parks where you have just a few designated entry points. If you go to Rocky Mountain National Park in Colorado, you've got certain gates you can go in, and then once you're in, you're in the park. Well, the New River Gorge is not like that. We have towns that are part of the national park, and there's lots of different ways to visit it and enjoy it. So part of the kind of thought process behind this, the construction and finish of the bypass, if you're visiting Sandstone Falls, and then you're going to go to Fayetteville, one of the possible places you would come through, or possibly take advantage of hospitality and lodging, is right here in Beckley. There's a lot to offer in Beckley. There's a lot of tourism opportunities. So this concept was different than just thinking about an outdoor amphitheater. It was proposing that this could be a location for a community park and a visitor's center. Visitor Center, obviously, to be run by an entity such as Southern, visit Southern West Virginia, or, you know, have a staff booth that if people stopped in, they could be provided information on what there is to do in the area, different activities, hospitality, restaurant options. So this kind of, I'm just giving you all this background, because I know a lot of you probably never even knew that the landfill existed, that it was out here at this location. So I'm really just trying to bring everybody up to speed on everything that's happened today. We have basically what we would consider three different options of how to clean up this landfill. Option number one is to take the material that's there that's contaminated, haul it off-site, and dispose of it at an appropriate certified landfill. The cost associated with that would obviously involve a lot of trucking and hauling of that material. There's significant amounts of debris underground that have to be excavated, loaded, and taken to a different location. And then you're left with, well, how do we restore and reclaim the site? You then have to bring new material back in to fill in the cavity that you're going to create by taking out old trash debris. With the amount of money that we have from a brownfield grant, it's not a feasible option from a cost standpoint. Option number two is to look at doing an onsite repository. So that's saving some money. You're taking that material and you're putting it in a designated location onsite, and you're putting a cap or a liner over it of some sort. And it's giving you the ability to save long haul trucking costs, but it's still, you're moving material, and you're having to bring new material in to replace the void that you've created. Neither one, from a cost standpoint, make any sense. We see this a lot in commercial redevelopment of brownfield sites, where they may want to, if there's somebody that's coming in, and they're going to build a factory, and it's on a brownfield site, they may have a capital budget to do something like that, to take that material, haul it off, and then bring new material in. With what we're talking about here, that is tourism and outdoor recreation focused, that's not going to be achievable from a project budget standpoint. So we're kind of left with this cap and place option, which means we need to delineate the outside limits of the landfill. We would put a, basically, an impervious membrane layer over top of the contaminated areas, and then we would bring in clean soil material over top of that and plant it with grass seed. There could be gravel parking areas to help support trailhead and access to the mill site, or what other things might be developed at this property. But from a cost standpoint, that's our most feasible option. And that's what, as a consulting team and a project team, we're recommending, that's how we're wanting to move this project forward. The cap and place does present some long-term monitoring requirements. There will be groundwater monitoring wells that would have to be put in and observed and reported to folks like the DP and EPA over time. You're also going to be into a situation where that has to be maintained. So you can't have trees growing up over top of that liner, because the roots will puncture the liner and defeat the purpose of ever doing it. So it's got to be just a grass-maintained area that is mowed at least on a quarterly basis, depending on, you know, what type of growth season you're going to have. But the point being is, there is maintenance associated with this. This is not a, we put the cap in, and we walk away, and we're done forever. But it is, from an initial capital construction cost standpoint, our cheapest option. And I do think if we do this right, it presents limited long-term maintenance and care. It's basically just, you're mowing a grass lawn and kind of performing inspections and making sure that the liner hasn't been damaged. As far as how that impacts the redevelopment potential, I want to be very clear that Thrasher is under contract to work on the remediation. So while reuse planning was an eligible activity as part of the brownfield money, we're really doing that just to show everybody, here's what's still possible on the property. You could still build a visitor's center and a theater on this property if the shooting range was moved to a different location. That's what this concept shows. So the shooting range is currently located here. We would construct a parking lot in that location, and use some of the developable property that we have left over for a combination visitor's center and theater, if that's what the city decides to do with the redevelopment moving forward. All that to say, we think, even with the cap and place option out here, it's not restricting what you can ultimately do with this property. It's the cheapest, it's low long-term maintenance cost, and it doesn't really restrict what else you can do with the property. Again, if this were a situation where that was the only developable property we had, and we really wanted to put this back into some sort of productive reuse, we may consider some of those other options, if you could allocate the money to it. But this is what we believe, you know, is a viable concept option. I'm not going to go into a ton of detail about what all this represents tonight, unless you all have specific questions, just because this is something that's got to be planned and evaluated and designed and figured out. And there's another session after us to talk about the Congressional directed spending request. That's not what I'm here to do tonight. I'm just here to educate you on the brownfield remediation project that we're doing. So with that, we're kind of at a point now where we're finalizing the remediation plan, and we're working on construction documents and permitting associated with this, to get this actually put out the bid, so that a contractor could come in here and clean this up. We will have, there are kind of vast amounts of the hillside that we're going to be very specific about where we're cleaning up and where we're on. And kind of how we're going to control that is, capped area would be safe for people to come and park a vehicle there, use that as a trailhead, picnic shelter there, depending on how it's placed in association with that liner. But we can't, without spending the time to go down the hillside and clean up all of the debris and do continuous testing, and we're not going to deface that whole hillside, is what I'm trying to say. We're not going to go down there, pick up all this debris, cut down all these trees. We're going to put access controls in place and fence areas that are, basically have signs on them that say, this is a contaminated area, and, you know, you are not to enter, type of thing. That's what we're going to be minimally required to do through this grant. That does not mean that we can't ever do trails in that area. They've just got to have the same access controls, and you've got to have the appropriate amount of cleanup in those areas. There was some evidence of some contamination down at the mill site. Sam, I think you can elaborate on that a little bit if you want to, just from a standpoint of how minimal it was.
Previous investigations did do some soil sampling down at the mill site. There were some minor hits that were above some of the regulatory limits for residential purposes. There was not a large volume of samples collected in that area, so I don't believe it's an issue. If we collected additional samples and did some statistical analysis, I believe that those would all be well below any kind of residential values that would be of concern, and it would not be a public health hazard. But that's something that would, could potentially be done in the future yet, to be able to show those results and to take those samples. But other than that, I don't believe there's any reason to go down there, again, to strip the earth and to cause more damage. At this point, it's better to leave it in place and deal with the issues up at the top of the hill, and deal with the caving that's required up at the top.
So that's a lot of information. I tried to be as quick as I could. I want to answer any questions that you all have, specific to the remediation and our plan of action and what we're doing. There is another topic on the agenda right after us to talk about the Congressional directed spending. So again, I want this to be focused on the remediation and how we're approaching this, and answer any questions that I can.
I have a question for Chief Bailey. With, well, with the shooting range, if they decide to take over the shooting range, wherever you all go to...
It's something we have to talk about. We've talked about it before. There's been several locations, just nothing new forward at the time, just kind of on the hillside.
Okay.
It's something we have to definitely talk about.
Okay, thank you.
And I also just want to clarify, nothing we are doing right now would impact their operational ability. As far as redevelopment potential, what I just showed obviously does. But nothing with the just cleanup of this project will impact what they're doing.
Right. Sam, I do have a question. Concerning the capped-off area, is that going to be similar to a post-closure, how, when you close a landfill and you have a post-closure, and it's a 30-year, so would that, is that the same, that you watch it and you, while you seat over it and you mow it? Is that, is that the same?
It's very, very similar to that. This landfill was kind of pre-law, as far as those regulations go. So there wasn't like an official closure process, but that's basically what we're doing.
How, is it going to be a multi-liner that's going to be on there? Like, our landfill has 10 liners. Is it going to be, I know it's better to just leave it there rather than, you know, move everything around. So is it going to be multi-layered, and is it just going to be where the fire was? How many acres is that, that's going to be capped off, of that whole area?
We're basically, I'm trying to remember the exact acreage. It's on top of that mountain. We're basically just putting a liner over the flat area of the hillside.
Just the flat area.
And we're also offsetting a buffer, because if you go out there today, I mean, it's like flat ground, and then it just drops off. So we're also going to have a buffer that offsets probably 30 feet or so from the edge of a slope, just to eliminate, like, we want to keep that vegetation there on the perimeter. I mean, it's several acres. I don't have that exact number.
That's fine.
This undetermined redevelopment, and when you do your remediation, will that affect what the development will be? In other words, your on-site development?
It will affect it on that particular location. So you're not going to be able to put any structures there. You're not going to be, I mean, what we're trying to think ahead now is, we're going to have, obviously, some parking areas. So we're going to have to kind of design those now, because what you're going to end up with is, in addition to the liner, which is intended to keep water from infiltrating into the landfill, you're going to need a structural geogrid to put over that, what I'm just calling trash material, to stabilize a parking area. So we've got to know enough about what we're doing there. If we're going to build a trailhead with just a parking area, that's got to be thought about now. But as far as future development goes, if, like, we're not going to be able, once we put this liner in, and we can't go out and build a building over top of it. Because your foundations are going to be deeper than the liner is.
That's what I'm saying. So if the council wants to change what's developed in that area, will that affect what you've already previously done, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, we need to know, if you want to put something out there, we need to know that. Because we're moving ahead with the assumption it's just going to be a green field with some parking. And if that's not what we want to do, we got to, we got to know now. So that, we'll have to, in that situation, what we have to do is carve out an area that we would excavate the material, and then put it into kind of that repository area, so that we can really clean up certain segments of the soil.
Can you pull that slide back up, where you had, you know, you had, like, where the Beckley landfill was? I think it was one of the very first ones, just to kind of show us where exactly, maybe back, like, where you, at the very beginning, where you had, like, you pointed out, like, go mark and all that, the points of references. So really, like, where the police range is, if I'm thinking correctly, that's where the development would be, that's where the theater, the, you know, where you got police range, right in that area.
Basically, there will be three games.
Yeah, and so, it's just that point there that would not be developable, like, where the flag is, correct?
And those are your, you only have three locations of what I would consider flat ground on this property. You've got the landfill site, you have an ice bench up here as you first entered, and then you've got the flat park where the actual shooting range is. So those are your kind of ideal development locations anyway, basically taking one out of the three, and we're saying, you can't do anything here.
Sam, the $500,000 that was awarded, does the scope of work and putting those liners, is that where that pot of money will go to for that remediation that way?
Yes.
Do I have that correct?
Do you have any questions?
Well, how, excuse me, how deep does that liner have to be? Do you have to clear off topsoil, put the liner down, then bring dirt back in?
You have to have at least a foot of cover, I believe, is the spec that we're looking at. So you're going to have to bring in clean material over top of that liner.
Sherry took me down over there years ago. We went way over the ceiling. So, I mean, so there's trees, if I remember right, there's trees, you have to cut all that out, all the roots out, all that, and then nothing else will be planted back over there. Just grass.
No drubs, no trees, nothing. Which is why we kind of wanted to have a buffer on the top to keep off trees, because if not, it's just going to be, there will be no windbreak or anything like that.
Does the grant cover the 100% of the construction cost, or are we on the hook for any additional?
We're trying to do this 100% grant. I mean, at this point, we're, we actually just had a meeting last week, where we're reviewing kind of the budget that we have. Now that we're through the planning phase, we're trying to associate, here's what we can spend on construction, which will dictate the size of that cleared area. We're kind of having to work backwards with the money we have. $500,000 is a lot of money to you and me, but when it's a project like this, it's not very much money. So we're having to kind of work backwards with the grant, to say, here's what we can dedicate as a cleaned-up area. Again, back to my first slide, this is all about, right now, we don't want people out there, because it's contaminated. We want this to be a place people can come and enjoy.
Right.
Any other questions?
Anybody else?
All right. Thank you all very much.
Yeah, thank you, Sam.
Thank you.
Okay, so next up is proposed projects for the old Beckley landfill site using congressional funding. Is somebody here to speak? Josie?
Yeah, I should be on line.
Oh, okay. Well, that's who I was kind of looking for, was Jenna Belcher.
Sorry, guys. I have COVID and flu A, so I'm going to have to present from home. But we have Andy Davis in the room from our team, as well as Josie, to answer questions. And I'm going to try to share my screen, so you guys can see the presentation.
Can you hold up one second, Jen? I think Anthony's getting the screen pulled up for us.
Okay, great.
Maybe volume.
Oh, she's not here.
She's not around.
She hasn't.
They just wanted to do an amphitheater there. She could come today.
No, it's not.
Rachel was going to say someone.
We said, we want this instead of this.
Amphitheater, I don't know even where they came.
That was the story.
I think it'd be great. There's like two of them, Roanoke, and they were.
Similar to when they tore down Bear Devil's tree, and they put Barrett's there, and covered everything. Nothing could ever be built there. But the amount of money that education saved in having that.
I know. What do we do with it?
Kids get that play around in.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah, I understand.
What's fair is fair. Yes, we did ask Wendy about that.
All right, Jenna, I think you're on the screen.
Okay, thank you, guys. Can you hear me okay?
Anthony, can you turn that a little bit?
Can you guys hear me okay? Thanks. I'm sorry I can't be there with you guys in person, but as I mentioned before, I have Andy Davis as well as Josie Moore on our team. Andy has been with this project from the beginning, that, that we became involved as NRG RDA. So he's going to help answer some questions after I go through some really brief slides. I think Sam did a, a great job sort of outlining the remediation process. But one of the, the consistence across this project is that this has been a vision for Beckley for a really long time, long before NRG RDA or Thrasher became involved. So we kind of want to talk through some of that history as it relates to the redevelopment and the reuse for this location after the remediation is completed. And then we want to be, you know, fully transparent with the questions that we have for the city and city leadership today so that we can think about those leaving this workshop. So we can determine the highest and best end reuse for this overall location. So as Sam mentioned, and just to kind of reiterate, this was obviously previously used as a municipal dump site that was owned and operated by the city of Beckley. And we really recognized, and, and many before us recognized, that when they were looking at different concepts of what this area could be utilized for, it was really strategically located with potential for redevelopment to serve that larger Piney Creek Gorge and Mill area. And really strategically placed as, as what we often call the hub of the New River Gorge National Park. So this area has really been identified for strategic redevelopment through a variety of concepts and planning firms that have been going on, you know, since, since 2010 and, and after. So we wanted to step up and, and help the city not only remediate this site, but transform what is currently a liability into a community asset. I think Sam mentioned a little bit of this in his presentation, but the city of Beckley worked with WVU students, WVU Tech students and WVU students back in 2017 and other professional firms to really determine the best ways to put the property back into productive use. This was before NRG RDA owned the site and Beckley, city of Beckley was still the owner. Some of the end uses that were identified in multiple concepts included trail access to the Beckley Mill, a visitor's center and an amphitheater. So in 2021, Beckley transferred ownership to NRG RDA. Again, the reason that that had to happen is that no entity can apply for brownfield funding to remediate a site that they were the owner of when the site was impacted. So because the city of Beckley owned the site when it was a dump, they could not, the city of Beckley could not apply for those brownfields funds to remediate. This is not uncommon that cities and municipalities and counties transfer ownership of properties in order to access funds to remediate. So that was really the rationale behind transferring to NRG RDA. So as you heard, we were awarded $500,000 in EPA brownfields funding for the environmental cleanup to meet those environmental regulations for the redevelopment of the site. As, as Sam mentioned previously and to some of the questions that you all asked, we did have to identify potential end reuse. NRG RDA used what the city of Beckley had already prepared on their own, which was many of those concept sets mentioned above, trail access to the Beckley Mill site, the visitor's center and the amphitheater. When we wrote the brownfields grant, we, we said, you know, the city of Beckley has done work to conceptualize multiple reuses for this property and we feel that all of those are valid end reuses should this site be remediated. Moving forward, in 2024, NRG RDA on behalf of the city of Beckley submitted a congressionally directed spending request to construct a visitor's center and amphitheater based on existing concepts. I'm going to take just a minute to explain how that process works, just so that everyone is aware. Congressional directed spending is also known as earmarks. And we have not had those in quite some times. Those came back in 2021. But before that, we had not had congressionally directed spending or earmarks in over 10 years. The process is a little different than a normal grant process. You submit, an applicant submits a request that is simply a narrative form with a very rough budget for a project. The senator or, or the congressional member determine which projects they want to earmark for grant funding to be included in the congressional budget. Once a congressional budget is passed, if those earmarks make it into that budget, you then have to apply for a formal, for a formal application for those funds. So where we are at currently in the process is that that grant request, the CBS request was submitted in 2024 on behalf of the city. And Senator Capito did select that as one of their, one of her priority projects for funding in the fiscal year 25 budget that has not yet been passed. So again, you just saw this photo that Sam indicated and, and there were some specific questions about the location. The remediated site and the landfill site is that parking area there to the right. But this was sort of the, the big picture, very rough, very fast, put together concept for a visitor's center and amphitheater based on those concepts that were previous concepts that the city of Beckley had, had put together. So again, we, we used this reuse vision of a gateway for tourists exploring Beckley and the New River Gorge region, an outdoor amphitheater for concerts, green space for recreation, and then just again, a catalyst for economic and community revitalization. So this is in no way a final design. This is simply a rough sketch of what could be on both the landfill site and the existing acreage around it should the city of Beckley decide they want to move forward with this concept. So the project status and the milestones, it's really important to us as NRG RDA that it, moving forward into kind of finalizing the next steps on the redevelopment of this, that the city, that city council has a say in what this site becomes. So what we're really asking is right now, before March 14th, which is when the budget has to be passed by Congress, the city needs to determine and sort of explicitly define its commitment to prioritizing this project as well as the long-term sustainability of this project. Again, this was not a project envisioned by NRG RDA or by Thrasher or by, you know, this council, last council or, you know, all, all of, all of the, there were a lot of players that were involved in this over the last 10 plus years. And so it seems that there was a lot of, from the, the background information I've gathered, there was a lot of support around this idea for an amphitheater and visitor's center moving forward. And we felt that, you know, this, the city council support was, was, has always been there in some capacity. So what we have discussed with some, some of the folks in Beckley, especially Lieutenant of Parks and Rec, is we really want to know the sort of size, scope and cost comparison for, for exactly what this asset should look like. Should we have, you know, a huge visitor's center and amphitheater? Should we have something smaller on this site? What does this look like in terms of the region's larger assets? So we have, we have talked to some feasibility planning firms that are interested and, and very excited about the potential of doing a feasibility study for this type of facility in Beckley as it relates to the larger New River Gorge region. And so we really feel like the next step is for us to execute a feasibility study to determine that right size, scope and cost comparison. But also help support a collaborative sustainability plan for the city of Beckley. Because the last thing that we want to do is build an asset that the city cannot sustain and maintain long term. So with all of that being said, our goal is, once the congressional budget is finalized and our funding is committed for this project, we want to be able to move into Q4 2025, bidding out the final design and construction, or the engineer for final design and construction so that we can take that feasibility study and start designing the implementation of this asset. The two biggest questions for us as NRG RDA is, you know, will the city provide their commitment for the final grant request that has to be submitted once the budget, the congressional budget is approved? And if NRG RDA is willing to match funds, is the city willing to also support match funding for that feasibility study? So that's sort of a, a very short presentation around the next steps and the status of this overall project. But we felt it was really important that now that we have a lot of new council members and new leadership in the city, that we sort of explain how we got here and the city's role in really owning this project moving forward and, and helping NRG RDA understand how to guide this project for the betterment of the city of Beckley. So Andy is in the room to answer any additional questions and, and I'm going to stay on WebEx to answer as well. But, but that's, that was really our goal today is to, to share and determine city council's support for moving this project forward.
Okay. Thank you, Jenna. Do you want to come up to the podium, Andy?
I'd be glad. You all might have also noticed that $500,000 is a nice even round number. That's the maximum amount that an applicant can get for an EPA brownfields remediation. So something that Sam spoke to earlier and some questions that were already asked of, well, how far will that go? We're going to go as far as we possibly can with the amount of funding we could have gotten. And, you know, I can't tell you how much it would cost to remove all of the debris that was deposited there over those many years. But we, we were happy to get the maximum grant amount from the EPA. And we definitely want to stretch that funding as far as we can toward the, the future use of the site.
So my first question is the feasibility study, approximately how much you think that would, would cost? And the city would be responsible for half of it, is that correct?
So I'll answer that in part since it's kind of a multipart question. Like many things, a firm will charge you what you asked, what you asked for. So if, if the, the larger the geographic area you look at, the more it's going to cost. If we looked only at the city of Beckley, I think that it could be in the ballpark, it could be under $30,000 easily, which is still a lot of money. I don't, I'm not downplaying that cost. But it is scalable to some extent. And so we are expecting, if we look at a regional and of course, at our office where we do represent the four counties of Nicholas Bay at Raleigh and Summers, if we're going to be working with one community and finding information that's useful to the economy at a local level, we usually try to, to extend it and, and say, well, let's look at the whole region. I think it would be roughly double that, so approximately $50,000 for the regional. So that would be the ballpark of, of. But we, of course, would, would need to create a scope of work more specific. Line out the exact deliverables that we would want from the firm regarding the feasibility of outdoor amphitheaters, indoor amphitheaters, amphitheaters with certain seating sizes. And of course, I think we've, we've alluded to it, but we want to make sure that anything built on the site for the purpose of long-term sustainability is useful year round. We know that tourism is fairly seasonal, right? There are crowds that we know and can, we can expect certain times of the year. We want to make sure that this isn't just something that we can expect people to use for part of the year. We want to think through how it can be a facility that the city of Beckley and the region can benefit from year round. So definitely in conversations we've had with the project team on the topic of the amphitheater specifically, but also the, the other potential uses for the site, we're asking the questions of, well, should it be open air or shouldn't it? So that, those would be some of the questions that we would expect to be included in this feasibility study. What benefits could we get from different designs, different capacities of the development?
One thing that should have been asked is, once the area is capped, will we be required to capture any leachate and treat that?
Currently, there's, there's not any leachate. There's a little bit of a groundwater seep at one area. But we would anticipate that it's capped and then the sheeting of that capturing surface stormwater would prevent a, a lot of that actual infiltration down through that debris.
So as far as the amphitheater, I know I was on Theater West Virginia board for a few years with Leslie. Has there been any discussion at all about moving? There's, okay.
The park service is, they have discussed it with the park service.
Okay.
The facility actually is owned by the park service, but they don't have the money to keep it up. And it's always kind of been, there's certain safety standards that they expect, but then it's really on them. And there's kind of like an agreement right now that if Theater West Virginia would go, they would hate to see him leave, but they would be like, because they want that facility gone.
I know the staffs, the handrail we dealt with when I was there.
There's no compliance whatsoever out there whatsoever, and the park service is aware of it. So, and also I think you were on the board the year that it rained 11 nights out of the summertime. And it, you know, it's, it's devastating to them. If they could be someplace closer, not at the end of a six mile stretch of road that people could just happen by or if it was covered. But it would just be their permanent home, but it would be used, you know, they only do productions in June and July and the first week of August.
So you, you will be open to, be a community center or community.
Oh, it would, yeah, it would definitely be operated like that.
But are we talking about the city of Beckley operating the amphitheater?
It would be the city of Beckley's and then they would have memorandums of, the way I understand it, there would be memorandums of understanding with different people and, and with the understanding that Theater West Virginia would be the occupant mostly in the summertime through their schedule. And then anything else that could have been scheduled throughout the fall and the winter and the spring and summer. And then the spring would be open to whatever.
Yeah, that, that, go ahead, Sherry.
Leslie, how does that work with Theater West Virginia now, I mean, since you're, so yes, it's at the national park. And so if we had a memorandum of understanding, would that mean that they would pay the city of Beckley to use that facility? Or how, how does that work now with Theater West Virginia and the National Park Service?
The way it works out there now, there are some fees that are back and forth with them. They get a percentage of the concessions, I believe, not a percentage of the gate. I don't know when those things would have to be worked out because Theater West Virginia, I think, is anticipating that their attendance would be much more than what it is out at Grandview. So there would be some half of the gate or something that would be worked out with the city of Beckley.
Jen, are you still there?
Yes, I'm here.
Hey, this is Cody. So is this something that has to be as a theater per se? I mean, I, I think there might be, I mean, I'm definitely personally, I like the welcome center idea, but there's, in my opinion, there's a lot of concerns with the theater. I mean, we're having some problems with our own theater, at least uptown right now, just financial obligations and stuff like that. And, you know, I know Theater West Virginia has come to us probably two or three of the last four years. I've been on council asking for money and I know they've went to other entities asking for money because they struggle. Is it, I mean, is this like dead set if we get this funding that it has to be spent on a theater or can it be spent on something else?
So the, the, this was actually the, the whole reason we wanted to have today's conversation, Cody, is to determine, you know, we want, we propose that we would redevelop this landfill site and the adjacent area with a community asset. And so we want to determine. Um, and so we wanna determine the best community asset, the highest and best community asset that, that should go there. Our proposal included a welcome center and amphitheater. I think that there is room for, um, for us to, to, um, sort of scale that in a way that potentially it is only a welcome center, or it is only an amphitheater, or there is a way that we could, um, look at something that's more flexible of a community space. Um, so that, that was really the, the rationale, um, for today's meeting was I needed to, to know, you know, as the owner of the property currently and as the owner of the funding, this has to benefit the city of Beckley and it has to be the city of Beckley's asset at the end of this. It's not NRG RDA's goal to tell the city what to build there. And so we really wanna make sure that it is the right asset. So I think that there is some, some room within reason, um, to determine what goes on this location with these funds and what size it is. Um, but I think that we are going to need to better understand council's, um, direction, uh, that, that they desire we go.
Let me ask you this, Jen. So for, you mentioned visitor's center, and I, I've seen the, the drawing of it and everything, but what, what would be the draw? Like what would, you know, that, that bypass is mostly used by locals. People coming from sixty-four from St. Lexington, Virginia, probably go sixty-four to seventy-seven. What, what, what would be the draw to draw visitors? You know, we had a conversation about four months ago about the, the visitor's center that we have here in town, and we closed it down early because nobody went to it. Like what, what would be the draw for somebody from out of town, out of state to say, let's go down over this hill to a visitor's center?
I mean, I think the benefit for this particular area as it relates to visitor's center in my mind, and, and Andy may want to, to speak more to this, but I think that it is that overall, um, outdoor concept that we've talked about with the connecting trail area and the ability to, you know, have climbing access nearby. Um, so I think that it, it, you know, this does factor into that overall larger sort of Beckley outdoor strategy that you guys, um, have planned for. And so I think that would be a lot of the draw is, you know, not only the visitor traffic, but, um, but that overall just general area with the mill being nearby, um, the connector trails and the adjacency close by to the National Park. Um, I think that, that was in my mind, the reason that this was conceptualized in the beginning. Leslie may also have some background. I think when the visitor's concept first came into play, that was a, maybe a private individual that, that sort of came up with that scenario. Um, so she may have a little bit more background on that.
Yeah, Tom knows too. The very first thing that ever happened was Tom.
Would you like to speak to that, Tom?
Ryan, first of all, um, when we got working with the mill, it was directly off Interstate sixty-four. And it's like two stoplights off the interstate. And, um, the bypass is a major thoroughfare, and it's gonna be, become more of a major thoroughfare with hotels, restaurants, and things of that nature that will be developed down through there. But when you, you talk about Lexington, you know, Virginia, they get off at sixty-four, you get on seventy-seven. But what if you're coming from Baltimore, Washington DC, or, uh, New York, or there's all kinds of major metropolitan areas above our Interstate sixty-four exit? And we, we were hoping that this would turn into be the gateway to the National Park. They come in, they get off at that exit there, and when they come to that visitor's center, they think they're at the park. That's the whole concept, and if you ever take a little visit down to the bottom at the mill, you'll understand the beauty that's, that lies right there. So that's why we kind of focused on a visitor's center. And then later, Dr. Jarrett was involved, and that's when the, uh, the, uh, the theater began popping up, and we started talking about the theater. But, um, like Jenna's trying to explain, it's not just a theater. It could be anything. It could be whatever we want it to be. I mean, you, you got a blank canvas here, but the visitor's center is a very good invitation to people to see the area and find comfort there. I mean, um, the city could go and put a trailer park, uh, over on one end of it. Um, that parking area could be a community park. So there's a pond there, there's a, there's a shelter there.
Right.
You know, it has a lot of benefits and it's like, it's, it's in the middle of where we wanna be. It's, it's definitely the direction. If you're, if you're behind, um, you know, tourism, this is our opportunity to be the crown jewel of the National Park.
All right, let me ask you this. So if you're over there, if you did put a visitor's center there, and all I keep thinking about is the visitor's center there when you cross the bridge, uh, the New River Gorge Bridge, and they got the visitor's center that goes down toward the walking trails and everything else. Is there something that you could walk through the visitor's center to go to trails and, and see scenic views? I've not walked over that hill, I don't know.
Well, that's.
But is, is there any grand views, or is it just kind of? Okay, that's all I'm asking.
The mill is about a half a mile from where the visitor's center would be.
Okay.
Um, this, uh, the remediation project, it could, you could have an overlook there, and it's a beautiful gorge there, and it also looks at the, um, I can't think of the guy's first name, but the Brown, the guy's last name is Brown, the bridge that crosses Piney Creek there.
William Brown.
You can see that as a vista over in that direction.
That's awesome, okay.
I mean, it is, I mean, and when you get down to that side, when you go over to that side, there's no power lines. The only thing of modern day that you will look at would be a railroad track. I mean, you can't see any power lines and very little noise from the interstate, so it, it's pretty quiet. It's pretty nice down there.
But you can go through the, if you build a travel center there, just to make sure I'm not ever saying a visitor's center, could you go and access hiking trails to other areas?
Yes, the, from that area, you, you, we're working on it, to get a trail all the way down to the New River, following Piney Creek all the way down.
Yeah, see.
And that's like thirteen and a half miles.
Right.
I mean, uh, you can do a down and back marathon if you want.
Or Jenna.
Yeah.
I've spent a lot of time over on the gorge because they have an educational component there. So they have, um, like, a little theater inside, and they have the visitor's center there. It's kind of all-in-one. It can be used all seasons. Would that be a possibility for this location?
Easily, easily. I mean, this is, this mill we keep talking about, when Alfred Beckley came to Beckley, you had to have, water was a, an important source for survival. And this mill was about a mi- it's a mile away from Wildwood, and it's, it's, um, it's where they worked, you know? And it joined two communities together, because there used to be a bridge across there. It's, it's a, it's a beautiful place, and when Jenna first came to town, she asked Leslie and the mayor and everybody, I'm here to, to make a big project. I want a big project. And they're showing her different things, and they said, you need to come down and see Tom. And those plans that WVU put together, the, the landscape people, uh, we had worked hard, and they had these big plans, and when Jenna saw that and we took her down to the site, she said, my God, this is a shovel-ready project.
Okay.
And it's been almost seven or eight years.
Come spring, you, come spring, Tom, I think, you think you and Gary can give this council a tour like you gave the last one?
We'd love to, and we could get some side-by-sides and take everybody down and give you a tour of the property. It, it's pretty spectacular, so it really is.
And I, I think, just to add, thanks, Tom. I didn't know you were in the room, Tom, otherwise I would've called on you, so thank you for that. Um, because that, that really is where this, where NRG RDA got involved in this project. Um, but I also, you know, to your question, Natalie, I think it's really important that the city and council kind of determine what your priorities are for this asset that we build there. Do you want a small theater? Do you want it to be a larger amphitheater? Um, you know, we're, we're, we want to, to plan a feasibility study and contribute to a feasibility study that gets the council an asset that you all see benefiting the larger community. So, um, that's something we wanna prioritize. This is your all's project. Um, we're just the, the conduit to get, to get it done.
Well, just looking ahead, I just think that something that could be used more than spring and summer would be more beneficial and would be a better reason to take on such a project, because we know that if it's only seasonal, it doesn't really take in that much. Um, I just, I like that idea, but that's just my opinion.
Let me ask you a question. What is the seating capacity there at, in Grand View?
Is this on?
One thousand. I know if, if you ever been down to Charlottesville, uh, as you go downtown, which downtown is beautiful, and you go down to the end, they just built an amphitheater down there. Um, the only problem, I felt, is it's not enclosed. I feel that if we did something like this, you would enclose it, because that way it'd be all seasonal. Uh, I think really, looking at the area, it's for growth-wise, the only motels on that side are just one motel. Now you go up on Hopper Road, you got nine thousand. But I really think that if we're looking at the growth of Beckley itself, because once they finish the interstate, I think it's, I'm like Tom, I think it's gonna bring a lot of more growth into Beckley, more traveling. And I really think that cost-wise, I think we have to look at, but if we put an amphitheater, which I think we really need, is to enclose it and put it all, the welcome center and everything, like get into enclosed area. That way, you know, you won't have to worry about, uh, the wind and the rain. But I personally, I, I can see it working in the city of Beckley, because either, either Beckley gonna grow or we're not gonna grow. And I think really this is a gateway in order for us to, to grow and to see the reason. Beckley is the hub right now, that's what, that's what we say, is the hub of Southern West Virginia. But you got towns outside of Beckley that's growing tremendously, and we still sitting still. I really think that this is something that we need to look at it, uh, and really put our thoughts on it, and how to bring it here. That's just my opinion.
Jenna, I have a question. This is, um, Janine. Um, do you know approximately how much of the congressional funding that you're anticipating?
So the funding request that we submitted was for twelve point eight million dollars. Senator Capito recommended the full twelve point eight million dollars in the budget. So we know that it stands at twelve point eight in whole, um, right now, but we also know that the budget has not, uh, been finalized. So, um, I know that Senator Capito will continue to advocate for the full funding because she very much wanted to, her exact words to me when she, um, let us know that it was included in the budget was that she really wanted to do this for Beckley. Um, so March fourteenth is the, um, date that Congress has to finalize the budget by, and we don't expect that there will be another stopgap. So we'll know the final amount, um, after March fourteenth, but it is recommended by Senator Capito in full at twelve point eight million dollars.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes.
Anybody else?
Be a great. Leslie, besides the campground that we have at New River Park, do we have any other public areas for campgrounds?
No, and that was in the original plan, that, um, Tom helped the Fulcrum people from WVU.
Mm-hmm.
Part of this was to be designated for that as well, and I wanted to show you all. Um, so this is kind of more the site, and we had talked about, um, interpretive trails that will come. If I'm right, Sam, this is the part we're not gonna use, right? It's gonna be fenced off. But we can start interpretive trails over here right from the visitor's center, and they will go down, all the way down to the mill site. And that was something that had already been, always been in the original plan as well. And, um, once we get down to the mill site, there was supposed to be educate, educational components about the water and the mill and, and the historical applications of it, as well as just the environmental applications. So we've thought about that, and once this trail is completed, then we'll work on getting the trail all the rest of the way down to where the land trust is, so that then we can say that you can stop here and you can go all the way to the New River, walk all the way to the New River Park.
I know this might be a silly question, but you know, I gotta ask. So because of the water and everything that's down there, is that in the floodplain? I mean, what happens if you've got things that are built, and is that the floodplain down there?
Well, you wouldn't, you wouldn't build anything. You wouldn't wanna build anything at the mill.
Is it, no.
I mean, it's all ruins down there. There's like a house foundation, and there's like a bridge abutment, and then the outline of the mill. You could explain that through interpretive signage. Um, what there's already developed, and Gary, our friend Gary Moorfield has put together, um, down here, from this point, over this way, uh, there's a trail system that goes all the way over to the soccer field right now. And from the soccer field, he's got that trail that goes all the way over to, um, oh, about where the Pine Crest Industrial Park enters into the bypass.
So that was in the original plans that it should be a camp, an area for a campground?
Yes, it was.
That's good to hear.
That would be good.
If you could pull up that, that other map, the, like, the nineteen forty map, the very beginning of Jenna's talk. We can see this better, that's it. Okay, you can see this better. Right here is the point we're talking about. This is what they're gonna remediate, right here, okay? The mill is right down here, and there's a road that goes all the way down and around to here. Okay, so you talk about access for a vista or something. I, I don't see why you couldn't come out here at this point and put an overlook, you know, all the way around that bend. And, uh, Piney Creek is real curvy right there. I mean, it's a lot of meandering, you know, valleys and cliffs and things down through there. And then right there is your train, right here. So occasionally you're gonna see a train go through.
Well, that's good. It had been talked about for a lo- a while back, but just remind me, after the remediation, does, is that planning to be a boat launch down there? Down at Glen Morgan? Not there. No, 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 not there. The other place you asked?
Yeah, Glen Morgan there.
Glen Morgan?
There's a trail. Boat launch there, yes.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
And then I think one of the reasons that we all really talked about a feasibility study and what would be the best use of it was a theater, but what size theater? Covered, uncovered? Um, does it need to be like a clamshell? None of us are theater experts, so what is it that this community needs? What we need from Fayetteville down would be best for us? What would be the drawing power? We know that the twelve hundred seats out at Grand View right now, they haven't filled those twelve hundred seats for thirty years. They have about five hundred people a night, and it's, um, but there is two ways of thinking of it in the theater world. It's kind of discouraging to play to a half-empty house. You feel like, you know, you're just, but if then there's limited seating, you, people buy more in advance and plan more, and you're more guaranteed, because people know that, oh, well, there's twelve hundred seats, I can go out anytime I want, if they know that it's limited seating. But none of us could determine what that magic number would be. Is it five hundred, four hundred, six hundred? That's why we just thought it would be best to have a feasibility study. If we're gonna spend twelve point eight million dollars, let's do it to the best advantage for all of us.
Will there also be a plan for the total plan, Tom? Like all your trails and those types of things, and anticipative trailer park or, or camping ground? I'm sorry, I mentioned trailer park.
No, no, but that's what, that's what you're gonna do.
Do what?
That's what you're gonna do right now.
Oh, you're the historian.
When we, when we first put this, when Mayor Pugh.
You said, you said originally you had a plan, put trails and this type of thing, so.
Yes.
Prior to building the structures, will we have that plan?
The original plan that you had. You have a copy of it, don't you?
I did, well, I gave it to Jenna, actually. But what happened back when, uh, Mayor Pugh gave us, um, you know, opportunity to play down here, that, uh, we created a committee, and everybody had different suggestions. And we wrote those suggestions down, and I did put it on a, like somewhat of a map or something that is just penciled in. And then when the WVU Tech, uh, Landscape kids came down, we gave them all those ideas, and they gave us a beautiful set of plans with these trails and all that stuff on there. Now, I don't have those anymore because I gave them to Jenna, and I know she has them, and Andy has them like in email.
Well, at least we got a plan.
Yeah.
There is.
Okay.
There is.
And I would also ask, um, I don't.
Just on the plan, right here, those are.
I don't know, do, do we, and I think I saw Mitch in the room. Do we know if this was factored into the, I, I don't know how much this was factored into the overall Beckley outdoor plan, um, but I, I would assume that that would be where we would want to make sure to factor in this project into the larger Beckley outdoor plan.
I don't think so.
Yeah, Jenna, that was included in the Beckley outdoors plan. For those of you who aren't familiar, that's our larger economic action plan for using outdoor recreation as an economic driver for Beckley. Um, and so I think that, uh, having a visitor's center here would serve not a. Um, and so I think that, uh, having a visitor's center here would serve not only the people coming through, but also the year-round users of that trail system. So, um, as it stands, the Piney Creek soccer complex trail system is one of the most used trail systems in the area. Um, it has over twelve miles of trails already built. And so via this access point, you would be able to tap into that trail system and have unlimited opportunities for mountain biking, hiking, and then there's also rock climbing out there developed. So, um, it'd be a really good hub, um, for just the community in general.
If I'm not mistaken, I think that was part of the comprehensive plan?
Yes, it was also included in the comprehensive plan, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
So I heard a few questions earlier, uh, from the mayor and multiple, uh, council members. And I wanted to make sure, um, in listening, I think some of them were touched, but I wanted to add a few little points here. Um, the feasibility study would look at comparable examples, uh, in Appalachia and elsewhere in communities of similar sizes, similar economic status, um, and compare. Um, many areas that, many, many communities that are building amphitheaters might have a pattern of growth. We want to look at ones that haven't had a pattern of growth for a while and say, what can be done and what has happened since they've done it? Uh, because we don't want to speculate on the, a different circumstance. We want, we want comparables. And, and so, uh, that is certainly a benefit of doing a feasibility study. An integral part of a feasibility study is a market analysis. And so I think that really underlines the questions that many of you have asked about the year-round, the use of the site, the building. What kind of programming have other places implemented? What partners have they brought on? What commitments have those partners been able to make towards the lease of space, towards programming in certain times of the year? What are the user groups? Um, as we overlay different concepts and plans, trail connectivity, possible whitewater boaters coming through there. Um, so it's important to mention emergency access and egress. I know that has, was a big part of the, the mill planning, but of course, any outdoor recreation is going to need that too. You want to layer all these things in. And so what do we want to look at? We want to look at examples of projects that made these same considerations. And, uh, put that together to say, well, if you check this box, this box. You know, if you, if you add all these ingredients, you really have a good recipe for success here. Um, and of course, in looking at those other good examples, or, uh, I'm gonna X out the word good there. In looking at all those other examples, you not only get to see the good, you also get to see where some of those have failed, where they've struggled, where they maybe projected success and they didn't need that. And so we're gonna get those lessons learned from those entities. Um, through networking alone, we could, we could find these answers. We could, some of us have been on vacations, we've seen theaters in Virginia and other states. And so, yeah, it, it's good to do direct outreach. Uh, but a, a real strength of doing a feasibility study and market analysis is that a firm that does this nationwide knows where to look and has case studies on the ready to compare and, and inform the decision-making here.
So Jenna, when do you need a commitment for us for a feasibility study?
So our goal is after March fourteenth, um, we would like to put out an RFP for, um, firms to respond to with a cost estimate. My expectation is that we would then come back to council and show those, provide those RFPs, um, to you all to come up with a, a ballpark cost so that we can then discuss, um, how we can split the cost of the feasibility study. So we're going, it, it's our goal to put out that RFP by the end of March, um, and then source those, uh, proposals and come back to council with a, an actual ask for match funding.
Thank you.
The only other thing that I do want to mention in all of this that I think has been assumed and, and briefly mentioned, um, is, you know, we, regardless of what this asset ends up becoming, we know that this larger area is primed for some type of development. Um, so I do think that it needs to be top of mind for council and, um, Mr. Gerald to think about where we're going to relocate that shooting range. I do not think that we should get to the eleventh hour and then shove that shooting range somewhere else. Um, I think we need to be thoughtful about where we position that and we need to start thinking about that now.
Other than, I know there was some possibilities, I never knew exactly. I just knew Mayor Rappel mentioned that there was possibilities before. Are some of those possibilities still available or have a lot of those doors closed? Do you know, Jenna?
Um, sorry, I didn't know if you were talking to me or Chief. Um, I think that there, that, you know, I know a couple of folks that have offered up, a couple of property owners in that area that have said they would be willing to look at properties that they have to donate for a shooting range. So I think that that, um, is completely possible, that we can bring those landowners back to the table and ask if they'd be willing to donate property for that. Um, but again, I think if, if we can just be thoughtful about it and start looking now and, and we're, you know, we're happy to support however we can in the relocation of that.
Cause I definitely agree, that's a major priority before we get too far ahead on this.
That's why I was asking Chief Bailey, what was his suggestions?
We'll get them bigger and better.
While we have this image in front of us, I also want to know something that hasn't been explicitly mentioned yet. You'll notice that this concept has a, a new road going into the site that doesn't exist. Require a good bit of planning alongside, um, all of the, the, um, folks involved in existing and, and potential expansions, additions to the bypass. So, uh, working with partners at all levels of, of state government highways, road, new roads are, are a whole nother level. But I think that brings another important point here, which is that thinking in phases is a very useful skill for us to be able to do. Both in the prioritization of what we need to do first and, uh, in figuring out how we want to pay for, you know, the pieces. What can we do first without having to build a new road? But then if we were to, to get to a point where that's a possibility, um, and, and it is determined that it's needed, um, what, ha, have we done everything we needed to, to be able to do something like that? So again, concept is the word, uh, but there's a lot in it. And so the more you look at it, the more you'll say, well, gosh, how do we do that part? And, and we want you to do that.
I have a question. So when was the money, when did NRGRDA learn that they receive? Could you tell me that date again, the five hundred thousand, when did they, you learn that? When was that?
That application was submitted in twenty twenty-two and so we would have been informed in twenty twenty-three. And so we're a year, nearly a year and a half into the implementation.
And so those monies are already, the possession of the NRGRDA, is that in an interest-bearing account, gaining more money that would be able to go to the, to the project?
That is not how these grants work.
How does that work?
So those work, uh, in, we make drawdown requests to the federal government substantially.
They're reimbursement-based. So we, we spending and then we get reimbursed from the EPA.
A drawdown?
Correct.
So you will prioritize what needs to be done and then go from there? Based upon all the things that we're talking about here? Thank you.
Any other questions for Andy?
I was just gonna tell Chief Bailey, you're always welcome at FCI Beckley. I could make that happen for you, for the shooting range, not to go to prison.
All right, I guess that's it. Thank you, Andy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom, thank you, Mitch. Thank you, Jenna, we hope you get better. Appreciate you being on the call.
Thanks, guys, appreciate you all.
For the tour down there. No, she's saying you're anxious, we're anxious.
Um, the lady that was supposed to do the presentation for the duck park in the city, I guess, was not quite prepared yet. So with that, may I have a motion to adjourn? Second?
Second.
Thank you.